Seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting the general consensus for order. Who would you recall roll?
Alderman Angel.
Here.
Alderman Gorman. Alderman Magley.
Here.
Alderman Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present.
All right, everybody's joining the class of nations?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with everybody's approval, we're gonna change the meeting agenda just slightly. Under new business, item A, number one, the appointments, we can move that up during next. And then, following that, we can move, under the action agenda, item C, C two, remove that next, and then we'll put back order following that, if that's okay. Yes?
I would like to request a moment of silence for the tragedy in Washington today.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Thank you.
You okay? Good bless you.
He tried to hold it back.
Okay, so was everybody okay with mixing up the agenda a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
All right. Then, under new business, under the menu world appointments, the discussion since I'm just the pro temp, but Mr. Greinke had every intention of doing this. We have an appointment of a new part-time police officer.
What's his name?
William Jason Hicks. William Hicks. If you'd like, I'd be glad to introduce him. That would be perfect. Thank you, Police Council. This is William Jason Hicks. He, I'd like your, I'd like your vote to approve him, get him sworn tonight as a part-time police officer. He comes to us well recommended via Fulton. I don't think I have to explain any connect there, through the Fulton Police Department. And he has a Class A license, he was working more than Sherlock for a while, and comes to us well recommended, he and his wife, who's a RN pediatric nurse, and her name is Michelle, and this, most importantly, and as you can tell, she really likes me. Her name is Charlotte. See, she really likes me. And they not only, when we do this, I'm not only recommending that Jason Hicks be appointed as a part-time officer, that, but that, I want you to know that he and his wife both plan on moving to the area to become members of our community, and that pleases me as it should. You, I would ask that you give consideration to and approve the appointment of Jason Hicks right now, as I say, right now, as a part-time officer, should a full-time opening occur, and we'll move Jason into that full-time spot, should one occur.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of William Jason Hicks.
Second. Motion in a second.
And I guess you made the appointment to begin with Mayor Pro Temp, Mr. Lee, and you're making a motion to approve the Mayor Pro Temp's appointment, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just wanted to be sure that that gets some momentum.
That's how we would like it to show. So we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
He's the major right hand, or he can after me. Aye, William Jason Hicks.
Aye, William Jason Hicks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of part-time police officer.
In the office of part-time police officer.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to laws and helping God.
According to laws and helping God.
Aye, one more. Thank you all very kindly, I appreciate your support.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our next, item would be C two. It's a bill authorizing, a promotion. Should I have a volunteer, anybody in line, to interview this man?
Hello. Bill number please.
Two six seven one. Thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to get, shoot it correct. Thank you for talking. I move that bill number two six seven one be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the compensation of a certain employee of the City of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number two six seven one be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the compensation of a certain employee of the City of Centralia, Missouri. I move that bill number two six seven one be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, have a...
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Simmons?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Kinda had a loss here with it.
Ordinance number is two seven three eight.
Two seven three eight, is that what you said?
Yes.
An ordinance two seven three eight. I don't really know what I'm doing. You guys are gonna have to help me.
Well, I mean, bill twenty six seventy one has been adopted and becomes ordinance number two seven three eight. The mayor generally says something along those lines. So that's been accomplished. We're talking about the compensation of Mr. Bellamy, from place corporal, place sergeant, and salary set according. That's the, set to the ordinance.
It does take effect at the start of the next pay grade, which is next Monday at seven a.m.
Whatever you tell me is what it is. Just... Can I say something, please?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. I've prepared these remarks, so I just feel that. To Mayor Pro Temp Lee and the rest of council, as previously discussed, I appreciate, respectfully appreciate, the promotion of Ronald J. Bellamy to the rank of sergeant. I know that this has to be done by ordinance. Position has been vacant since the promotion of Bob Byas to lieutenant. Corporal Bellamy was employed as an officer with the Police Department on April fourteenth, two thousand eight. He's promoted to the rank of corporal on December twenty, two thousand ten. He's proven himself over and over again to be not only a valued and integral member of this Police Department, but more importantly, of this community, being his wife, he and his wife, Angel, her son Eli, daughter Carissa, who's not here tonight, but they own a home in this community, and I don't know what you all expect out of us as a Police Department, but for me, this is what I expect, folks that are living, breathing, viable in this community. I cannot thank you enough for your support, for the promotion, I cannot thank you. If I've applied, if you so apply, Mr. Mayor? I have a certificate of promotion signed by you, sir, and me, to promote Ronald Bellamy to that sergeant. That pleases me more. Angel? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Angel, great appreciation of our pool of talent. Thank you, that's very kind. Thank you. Angel, put this in that.
Photo.
We'll move back.
I get a couple on the black camera.
And the consent agenda. Obviously, everybody got a chance to look at the agenda. Change the amendments.
I hope we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion in a second, approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Motion carries. Item number four, accounts payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars. That was also in your package. Go ahead.
There was a, Donna, going over those, the second time, we discovered that one of them was listed at twenty cents too much, so the items that were supplied, they're fourteen oh five, eight instead of fourteen oh six. It's definitely changed on the, I don't know if they're out there.
That was, oh yeah, but they...
I hope we approve the accounts payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in a grand total of four hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars, twenty-three cents.
Second. Have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Have a motion carries also. We have a written report from Chamber of Commerce on economic development. Item number five, the honor of citizens. No citizens, so we will check that out. This is the economic development report, that's what that's for. If you can read like everybody else.
Does James have a copy of that email?
Yes, I do.
What is the date of party, cause of this?
Ten eleven.
Ten eleven?
Yeah.
Eleven to twelve.
Eleven to twelve, about ten. Right, save. Thank you.
Do you have any, how many? How many people registered?
Actually registered, we're just kind of an email, but it said we're coming.
Is there a difference then?
Yes, there is a very big difference, but they will have probably between twenty-six and thirty-two this year, which is about max, based on last year's performance and able for lack of hurricanes and such things.
Understood. Thank you.
The action agenda, though we have no public hearing, is that still current?
Still the case.
Action agenda, finance?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing? We've got some licenses, still nothing?
Still nothing, sir.
And then, under legal, we have a bill, vacated portion.
Mr. Lee, I can explain that. That, the term vacation was what I did use previously regarding the termination of part of the easement. I just had forgotten about how that worked. Streets and alleys are vacated, but easements, like utility easements, are partial, are released or partially released. So I was in error in saying, and so when Lemon was talking about vacation, he was repeating what I had said.
Okay.
And so, it's actually a partial release of the utility easement. And what you have in front of you, before you, is an ordinance to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign this partial release of the utility easement.
I see that now, which is written correctly, and I just misstated it. Would somebody like to introduce this one?
I can. Bill number please.
Twenty six seventy two.
I move the bill number two six seven two be given its first read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Continue.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a partial release of the utility line easement. I move the bill number two six seven two be given its second read by title only.
Second.
In a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Close, continue.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a partial release of a utility line easement. I move the bill number two six seven two be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Heather, if you...
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Simmons?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Based on that vote, bill number two six seven two becomes ordinance number?
Two seven three nine.
On that matter, yes.
Okay. Figure number two, so we'll move to purchasing contract for the audit services of Williams and Keepers. So ordinance, so requires two readings. Somebody like to introduce this one?
I will. Thank you, I gotta hold up now. Bill number please?
Two six seven three.
Two six seven three, thank you. I move that bill number two six seven three be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute necessary documents to retain Williams Keepers LLC to examine and audit the financial statements and records of the City of Centralia for the fiscal years ending March thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, March thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, and March thirty-one, two thousand sixteen. I move that bill number two six seven three be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Continue.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute necessary documents to retain Williams Keepers LLC to examine and audit the financial statements and records of the City of Centralia for the fiscal years ending March thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, March thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, and March thirty-one, two thousand sixteen. I move that bill number two six seven three be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Continue.
Alderman Simmons?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Based on that, bill number two six seven three becomes ordinance number?
Two seven four zero.
Item number two, an agreement for police radio and telephone logger and maintenance with Versatile Corporation, also an ordinance, requires two readings. John, would you like to do this one? Really?
I'll do it.
Alderman Wilkins?
Bill number?
Two six seven four.
I move the bill number two six seven four be given its first read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Say aye please.
Aye.
Close, same side?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute an agreement for purchase of a police radio and telephone logger and annual software and equipment maintenance with Versatile Corporation, DVA Versatile Solutions. I move the bill number two six seven four be given its second read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute an agreement for purchase of a police radio and telephone logger and annual software and equipment maintenance with Versatile Corporation, DVA Versatile Solutions. I move the bill number two six seven four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, roll call vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Simmons?
Four.
Based on that, bill number two six seven four becomes ordinance number?
Two seven four one.
Item number three is an agreement for wholesale electric power distribution with Ameren Services Company. Another ordinance requires two readings. Catherine, would you be there?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you. Bill number please?
Two six seven five.
Thank you. I move that bill number two six seven five be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Continue.
Okay, a bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a wholesale electric power distribution service agreement with Ameren Services Company. I move that bill number two six seven five be given its second read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the City of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a wholesale electric power distribution service agreement with Ameren Services Company. I move that bill number two six seven five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Heather, sorry.
Alderman Angel?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Simmons?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Based on that, bill number two six seven five becomes ordinance number?
Two seven four two.
Thank you very much. That completes that portion, we're gonna move to old business, then, we have any old business?
No old business, sir.
No old business. New business, you've already completed, item A of the new business.
Did Mayor Grant, you mentioned you were about to go to Justin, too?
He did not.
Okay.
Any new business from the old? I haven't seen the ministry yet.
Several things, we'll try and get down to this one. First of all, my wife has concert gigs in northern Arkansas, so I'm taking Nash Friday off and the following Monday and Tuesday, so I can look pianos or not.
What part of Arkansas?
Chalk Pearl.
Okay.
They're packing the pianos. Synar, well, it's one, but it's in the van. It weighs a hundred and eighty pounds, it's not a steel琴 piano, it's a four three piano.
Okay.
You should come in here or something.
I should.
Yes. Second, thank you to Landon, I understand you came out and sort of helped with equipment stuff on the Friday night, when we had a little break. They probably could have used to about five o'clock when we had another one break this evening.
I was up there.
Oh, you appreciate it. Unfortunately, dry soil is finally doing its job and causing shifting, and basically, these things are just shearing.
Is that mine, something we need to be looking at? I mean, it was five feet from the other brick.
Probably is.
I mean, nobody called that line.
It will be a topic of conversation at the department.
Where was that?
Back here on, behind the railroad tracks, on Columbia Street.
Well, yeah, it's right next to the old, the new sidewalk, the, the side of the ditch. Okay. We have mailed a letter to people who receive oxygen, the oxygen list. We don't have enough backup generators to help. Twenty-eight people that are currently on the list, it just doesn't work. We've sent a letter notifying those people that fact that we will be contacting them, and we're going to develop a category triage for those people. And so, if they can make it for five or six hours without power, because they have bottled oxygen or something like that, we won't even call them. Will decrease the amount of time that dispatcher has to use during an emergency situation in all likelihood. If they need immediate help, they want a higher priority, and we will contact them and see how they're doing, and whether, if we have generators, we'll try and get it to them, but if we don't, in all likelihood, we won't, we'll arrange for transportation to a location that does have power, such as the community room, because our backup generator will be providing power to the city hall. And we'll take it from there. First thing we'll do is judge how long the power on you wait, and hopefully, it'll be somewhat more efficient. If you hear from your constituents about this, it's not requiring to shuffle them down, but we just have limited resources, and we want to make sure we don't overlook anybody. As far as I know, all of the nursing homes have backup power, so that's not an issue. But twenty-eight is way too many to try and accommodate otherwise.
Did you say twenty or twenty-eight? Twenty-eight. Thank you.
I commend you for doing that.
Sergeant Pius brought my attention, he's been reviewing the police operation plan. We were trying to do something with that, so it's not quiet, it's labor intensive at that moment. Moms are bringing incoming and powers out, we just had, we had to be smarter than what we were doing.
I commend you for that, too.
Okay, a reminder. Thank you, thank you. And I'll remind Mr. Gorman and the mayor when they get here. And I'll remind Mr. Foreman and the mayor when they get here that the regional municipal league will have a meeting on the ninth of October in Lexington. And anybody who thinks they might want to go to that meeting, it'll be six-ish, I think, by the time actual dinner and meeting starts. We might let Heather know about it so she can email reservations. And lastly, I got a call from the county commission. Funny now, if I could serve on committee task force they're putting together concerning the fairgrounds and the fact that they don't have a management group to look after anymore and they don't have a firm vision. So they have Roger Wilson heading the task force and they wanted somebody from this part of the county to be on it and they asked me and I said I would have to ask permission. And if John happens to know somebody who has a little bit more experience in managing affairs as a substitute, I could certainly feel free to kind of step aside and recommend somebody else to that task.
John, you have some free time, don't you?
Uh, no.
That was sort of my word, too.
And I'm going to suggest to the council and to Lynn that we really brainstorm and try to get him off of that for his own sanity.
I don't have a lot of expertise in managing facilities like that.
Just for clarity, the Boone County Fairgrounds?
Yeah, whatever the new name of that is. Expo and whatever.
So the whole management team that had it leased for a few years, that played out and?
Yes.
And they did not renew?
Yeah, that, that's, was news two or four months ago.
I kind of heard something, but I thought they were closing the thing down and doing something else. The management.
Was that, the management team?
That was.
And they don't have a firm prospect of what they want to do. And they really do need to develop a.
You have an idea?
I do. You know who'd be great on that? I'll get him up unless Lynn just is dying to do this.
James Smith. Just with my.
Hey, farmer. Except for in the one county.
Don Copenhager. Former president of MFA Incorporated, lives just south of town here. You want. I know, but he. He's got good business sense about it. He does. This is, this is going to be a big under.
They said a couple of meetings a month and I, it's sort of like the nine-one-one committee. Grouped to a lot of meetings as they were under deadline and this one is sort of.
That stuff. I'll get him up. I mean, you tell me what you want me to do, but I'll. Give him that. He would be certainly qualified.
Why don't, if you know him, I've only met him, I think, once or so while he's emailing. If he's interested, I will forward his name to him. He, he lives in Boone County, not.
Oh, yeah, he's just south of town here. And, and the board, I, I, what, what do they want you to do? What is this functionary?
Tell them what they can do with the fairgrounds in so many words, yes.
I think he'd be great, and I think he probably does. I can't speak for.
It's possible. It's already been asked. I don't know who else other than.
How about Blaine Brown's backup?
Plan? Okay. I'll pass that along to you.
Where does Mrs. Lewis live? What county does Mrs. Lewis, or?
I am at the foggiest. I almost want to say the edge of my range.
Good.
There's, uh, Miss Lewis.
Yeah, that's.
Pretty good.
I've got Mr. Copenhager's contact information if you may get that.
And if everybody says no, I'll serve, but it's.
I understand.
Okay. Did you say that you had to ask our blessing to do that?
I mean, if it's not something you want to do, then don't do it.
Huh?
It's problematic. I mean, Centroy, the Centroy area needs to be represented by somebody.
I agree. It needs to be represented. But I'm telling you that I'm not sure that you really need to be there. It's my opinion.
You think there's some politics at all?
I think there's going to be politics and I think it'll be taking more hours and we as a city want you to be donating to that particular issue. We need to find somebody else. That's my opinion. Could I be wrong?
No, I think you're.
I agree with what you're saying.
We, we need to try to round up. Don Copenhager, Haber sounds like an excellent idea. Plan be, and he would be politically connected to help us out.
Yeah, he knows the north end. He knows the county of Hollywood.
Uh, Snar. Wasn't Snar? Might be a, a good. Who was it that ran for school board? Christie, was that Darren's wife?
No, that wouldn't have been it.
So, so they'd be kind of Centroy's virgin people, north end of the county. Something like that. Unless you really want to do it.
I get the impression.
I just want, I just want to make sure that the north end of the county does have us, a dog in the fight.
That may be, we'll be on sport.
I do not know. I did not directly, this was an email response and, and sort of thing. With Janet Conson. Let's hope that Mr. Copenhager says yes, otherwise I'll start asking for second, third, and fourth suggestions. Because I sense if people could let me off the hook.
Anything else, Lynn?
Uh, no, sir.
He's the city attorney.
I, I do not have anything.
In school, Nathan Martin, I think, is the person to ask. He's, he's involved with stuff like that a lot.
As may arise.
So the fire truck checked out good, I heard.
Uh, yeah, I was going to let Vinnie take that announcement.
It checked out okay.
Yeah, he said it checked out good. No repairs are suggested.
Dottie said that the mechanic said that the transmission, the pump, differential, all have slack in them. You know. It's not outside the realm of just a little. He also said, we can fix it if you want to start throwing parts.
The white truck, I drove my old Chevy, which is easy to ease into it.
And has anybody thought about what we're going to do with the Baco? I mean, has that been, any thought?
It was a nice agenda. I figured, wait for everybody to be here, we'd talk about it next public works. Because there's even a, until we have the new one, there's nothing to decide yet.
I'm hoping you're.
Now at the bottom, I have a motion for adjournment.
Second, sir.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?